Okay. Welcome, everyone. My name is Federico Tozzi. I'm the executive director of the Italy America Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to welcome each of you for joining us in this town hall meeting about Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs. You can see my colleagues and our partners in this program. I would like to acknowledge Gailene Gonzalez from Union Camera Veneto, Greta Bilanzola from Eurochamber, my colleague Siena Pike, and Alice Biagini. Alice is the person responsible at the chamber for the program. I am the executive director, as I said before. The purpose of this presentation is to clarify some doubts, to give you more information about the program. This is a program that has been going on for a while. I'm happy to report that we were very successful in launching the program in the United States, and there's a very good chance that the program can be expanded in the future. And the reason why we are here today is to answer to all your questions that you have been submitting in the previous day. We will list all the questions at the end of this presentation, and we'll try to address each question. So we hope that at the end of this presentation that you will have a better understanding of the process of the program itself, the timing, the documents that are required. Don't take notes, because we will send you this presentation, so you will have the full slides. We will also send you a link to the recording of this presentation, so you will be able to re-watch it on your own. I would like to give the floor to Greta Bilanzola, so she can start talking about the program at this point. Thank you. Greta, please.
Thank you so much, Federico, for this introduction, and good morning to everyone. Thank you to the Italy-America Chamber of Commerce in New York for this opportunity. So I'm Greta Bilanzola, and project coordinator at Eurochamber for the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneur Global. And I'm going to give you a first insight of the general rules of it. But before going to the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs Global, I would like to give you some brief details on the general initiative, that is, the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs program. This program is an exchange program co-funded by the European Commission, which has been given since 2009 the chance to aspirant and young entrepreneurs, young in terms of years of experience, not in terms of age of the person. This is very important, to go abroad for a business-to-business exchange with an experienced entrepreneur. So the exchange can last from one to six months, and a financial support is foreseen for it. So this, why the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs Global? Because in 2018, the European Commission decided that a pilot project could be launched for extending the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneur programs outside the borders of the EU. So this gives the opportunity to do the same exchange, but in the US, in Singapore, and in Israel. So the project, as I said, started in 2018 and will last for the moment till March 2021. But the European Commission has already launched a call for the extension of the program, and we are waiting for the results. But for sure, there will be a phase two. So the exchange follows the same rules of the Erasmus for Young Entrepreneur general program, but can be from one to three months. A financial support is foreseen as well, and it is open to all the European nationals. So at the moment, the project is managed by a consortium that is Eurochamber's as the coordinator, and Union Camera Veneto, which is with us today, the Italian Chamber of Commerce in Belgium, and EOC International as partners. This partners have the role of intermediary organizations. This means that they can support the host entrepreneurs in the target countries and can follow the entire exchange from the beginning to the end. Let's say that as the program went abroad, the intermediary organization used some local stakeholders for supporting, especially in the implementation of the project, in the promotion of the project. And that's why the Italy-America Chamber of Commerce is organized in this today, because they are supporting Union Camera Veneto in this, especially promoting the exchange and in searching for host entrepreneurs that are interested in the program. Federico, I don't know if...
Yeah, no, thank you, Greta. So a few information about us. We are the oldest binaural chamber of commerce in the United States, founded in 1887. We are a private, nonprofit membership organization. Of course, our focus has always been Italy, but Italy is part of the EU. So we assist not only Italian company, but all businesses that are interested in doing business in the United States, in establishing a permanent presence in this country, in finding valuable partnership, investors. That's what we do, basically. We work very closely with all the binaural European Chamber of Commerce. I myself am the president of an organization called Leap Atlantic, which it's the newly formed entity of the European-American Chamber of Commerce, in which all my colleagues, from the British, previously, but the French, the German, the Spanish, American Chamber of Commerce are part of that. So we have a strong bonds with all those associations. We have been instrumental in working. We thank, first of all, Union Camera Veneto for giving us the opportunity to work with them, with them, Gailene in particular. And we have been basically promoting the program in the United States. We organized an event last year with Eurochamber and the officers from the European Union. They came to New York, we presented the programs. We also found host entrepreneurs. So we are constantly looking to expand the number of host entrepreneurs, either mainly, of course, in New York City metro, but since the focus of the program is on the New York State, we also expanded a bit further. So that's all for us. Greta, if you want to continue with your presentation, thank you.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you. So who can participate to the program? Let's say that there are two actors, principally. The one is the new entrepreneur, who is an aspiring entrepreneur, wannabe entrepreneur, or an entrepreneur who has just set up their own business and the business has no more than three years of experience. While we have also the host entrepreneur, who is an experienced entrepreneur with more than 10 years of entrepreneurial experience.
Greta, if I may interrupt you, because one of the questions that people tend to ask us, so we start also creating a dialogue here, it's the concept of this new entrepreneur. We got a question a couple of days ago. People are asking, it's based on the time, my age, I'm a new entrepreneur because I'm younger, or it's because I haven't developed my business idea yet. Or so can you explain how you guys consider a new entrepreneur? Because I think the definition is much more... It's not so strict as some people might think it is. Please.
No, exactly. As I told at the beginning, as I mentioned before, this is not something about the age of the person. So the age is not important at all. New entrepreneur means that you are unwilling to set up your own business. So you have an idea, you would like to explore your business, basically, your idea, or you have just set up your own business, I don't know, for example, last year or two years ago. So you don't have more than three years of experience as entrepreneur. So has... Yeah. I don't know if it's clear enough.
I think it is. If I may add, I would like to add a personal experience that we have developed with the program at the chamber. In the past, what we have seen that works very well in terms of acceptance from the host entrepreneurs and in terms of making the program successful is when the person that is applying for this exchange, the new entrepreneur, has a pretty good idea on what he wants to do after the exchange. And there are many possibility. He could be a person that is working for a company that hasn't yet been in the United States, and he's looking at this market as a potential place in which they can establish themselves. It could also be somebody from a European country that is interested in bringing some business from the United States to their own countries, which it's another area where we think there is a lot of interest from the host entrepreneur. Because at that point, the new entrepreneur to be some sort of a developer, a business development figure for them to bring business in a country where certain ideas, certain business model are not yet present. So I would like to invite all of you in the process of selecting the host entrepreneur and applying for a potential exchange with them, do your homework, come up with a real, strong reason to ask for that particular exchange. Because more this is defined, more is this precise, higher is the possibility that you get accepted, and at the end of this program, the exchange is really successful. Because what we consider as successful is not just the completion of the exchange itself, but also the continuation of this relationship after the exchange in the future as well. I don't know if you, Greta and Gailene, you agree on this?
This is... Hi, hi, everybody. I'm Gailene Gonzalez from Union Camera del Veneto. We are the host intermediary organization. We are located in Italy, and this is the reason why we established this good collaboration with the Italian-American Chamber of Commerce, that, as I told you by Federico and by Greta, they act as our partners, our staff there in New York. They help us in recruitment and promotional, and in many cases, also in the support to the entrepreneurs that go there at New York. Yes, I want to support Federico in this approach, because it's important that the new entrepreneurs have clear ideas regarding their business. Because from a partner with a European... The entrepreneurs that we have in our database are very business-focused, and it's important, really clear ideas, and to bring to United States a specific project in order to focus in future collaboration, business collaboration, and so on. It's not only an exchange of experiences or gain competencies in entrepreneurship fields. It's also to follow some business objectives, specific business objectives, because there is so many host entrepreneurs at New York interested in the European markets and create links here in Europe. And this is the new entrepreneurs that are listening us in this webinar. Please be careful when you select the host, and you have to be really, really positive with them, because it's really important for this. Okay.
Greta, please.
Yes, and of course, I completely agree. If we move to the next slide, I think that, yes, here, you can see that for applying to this project, it is very important, not only to provide your curriculum vitae, but also a business plan, a very accurate and complete business plan that will allow the hosts to better understand your idea of business. So all you have to do is to go on the website, erasmusentrepreneurs.u or erasmusglobal.u, then you will show also in the... I think there will be a slide with the website. I can also send it to you by the chat. You have to go and click on your line application. And apart from expressing the reason why you would like to be part of this business-to-business exchange, you will have to upload the curriculum vitae, the motivation, and the business plan. Before doing all of this, you will have to choose a contact point. And this local contact point is the intermediary organization I just mentioned before. So for the host entrepreneur, I mentioned that it is Union Camera Veneto, for example, but there is a database in the erasmusentrepreneurs.u website that you can choose by selecting your country. So once that the application is done, the intermediary organization will approve or will ask to improve the application, and then the matchmaking arrives. So you will find a suitable host entrepreneur. You can do it in different ways, by searching by yourself or by receiving the support of the intermediary organization, by looking into the database to the already-present host entrepreneurs that are interested in your countries, maybe. And once that everything is approved, a commitment will be developed, an action plan, let's say, where you will write your objectives and the benefits that you are intended to reach as a new entrepreneur, but also as a host entrepreneur. And at this point, the exchange can start. So this, as we were mentioning before, of course, it's a mutual cooperation, no? And it will let you grow professionally, because, for example, the new entrepreneur can have the opportunity to gain entrepreneurial skills while getting practical experience and receiving the advices of the host entrepreneur, the experienced entrepreneur. While the host entrepreneurs can gain innovative knowledge, for example, or fresh ideas. Or, yeah. But more, apart from gaining skills, this is also a way to access to new markets. So as Gailene was saying before, it gives the possibility to understand a different market and establish new business partners opportunity, finding new partners, finding providers, or even planning a conventuring corporation, conventuring opportunities later on. So this is more or less, as you can see from the slides, the benefits of the business-to-business exchange. And I think... I think...
Greta, there is some question in the program, in the chat question. There is, for example, there is Lucas Navicas that have the question, it is possible to prolong the stay from three to six months if going to Singapore? Is not? No. A global program is only for three months. And Lucas, if you chose to go to New York, you cannot go after to Singapore. You have to start and conclude the exchange with the same host. The other question is, how much is the financial help for the new entrepreneurs each month? For the United States, the financial support is 1,000 euros per month, plus 800 euros, a special fee for the travel costs. Denisa asked, are there any host entrepreneurs in nutrition domain to be entrepreneurs in nutrition? I'm interested in AEG Global. Yes, I remember that we have in... Wow, this woman in the database at New York, you remember, is a really partner of the Italian Chamber of Commerce. This Italian, I remember she's in this...
Vabre.
I have to give you, Denisa, I have to give you the name. I will remember the name, and I will write the name of the host entrepreneurs at New York. She's really, really nice, and she works at... She has a pastisserie, Italian pastisserie. If a new entrepreneur stop part in the AEG program in 2019, is it possible to take part again? No, no, because, Greta, this is a rule of the program. This is another important thing that I wanted to explain, better explain, because many entrepreneurs came to us asking that if I take part in any exchange in Europe, then I can abroad, I can go abroad, to Singapore, Israel, or United States? And please, you as support office, can explain them why they cannot do to the change, please? Why cannot they?
Yes, so the exchange can be done just once. I know that there was the opportunity for some new entrepreneurs who joined the program before 2000... I don't remember. Gailene, 2019, maybe, they will have the opportunity to...
Yes, the rule was, if you never, if you don't an exchange before 2018, you have the opportunity to join another exchange only if you don't have plus of three years of experience as a new entrepreneur.
Of course, yes, of course. Always respecting the rules of the program.
Yes, but we are in 2020. I think that all of these entrepreneurs that made experiences in 2018 have three years of experience. And I think that we has only two new entrepreneurs that go at the first, a local Erasmus, European Erasmus, and then they went to New York. But I think that this option is not possible right now.
Yeah. Well, coming back to the different domains of the host entrepreneurs, there is a wide variety of... Like, the host entrepreneurs come from different sectors. So yes, for sure, you will have the opportunity to find someone in the nutrition. And the database can be enlarged, you know. So even if there is no your perfect host in the database, there's always the possibility to find someone else outside and ask them to join the program.
All right. I would like, I see that there are coming questions on the Q and A. I would like to ask all the speakers, and especially Greta and Gailene. Let's wait until the end to address those questions, because a lot of those questions, for example, I've seen it, they are related to visa. So if we can wait until the end, and then we will answer, I think would be in some way better and more easier also for our guests to understand it. So some of the question, the majority of your question, I would say, comes around this topic. You know, how can I access the United States? What do I need when I travel to the United States? Do I need a visa? What kind of visa? How long a visa lasts? Who gives the visa? So we put together a few slides, and I will let you read it on your own. I will touch briefly on those slides. But I would like to start with a very important aspect that, to me, it seems that is not well-understood by the new entrepreneurs. And partly because they might have, like, a limited experience in traveling, or if they are, you know, if they traveled extensively, they might have done it within the European Union in an area which you don't actually need any visa. So there are aspects of traveling to the United States that are fundamental for me to... That you need to understand. The first of all is that when you come to the United States, you need a visa. You need a visa, or you have to be part of a country that has a waiver for the visa, which is the estat. We will talk about that later. You have no rights to enter in this country. And so the United States don't have any obligation to let anybody enter this country. A visa is granted. This is something that sometimes, even when I came here many, many years ago, it was difficult for me to understand. At the end, granting access to a foreigner in a country, it's granted. It's not, you have no right to enter a foreign country whatsoever. So it's something, it's a courtesy. It's something, it's an extension of the willing of the country to let people in. But, you know, there is no rights connected to it. That's the first aspect. The second aspect is there are two different levels when you, that you have to understand when you apply for a visa and you are trying to enter the United States. One is at the consul level. So let's say that you apply for a... We'll see the visa. But let's say that you apply for a B1 visa, or you want to come here with the estat. You go online, you follow the procedure. We have put like a slide specifically for that. And you get your estat. You might be under the impression that that is sufficient for you to get access to this country. But it's not, because there is a second level, which is basically the level when you arrive here in this country, where you deplane, and you are waiting in the immigration line to get into the United States. And there are inspectors from the Customs and Border Patrol, CBP, and Department of Homeland Security. These officers are the ones that are ultimately responsible to let you in. So we have seen cases in which, and I don't want to scare anybody, but this is something that you need to understand. I've seen cases in which people had visas approved at the consul level. When they came to the United States, they start being questioned by Customs and Border Patrol agents or DHS, Department of Homeland Security. And the answer that they supply related to the type of visa that they got were not the one that the agent was expecting, and they were rejected, which at that point, you have no choice. You have to go back to your country, and you might reapply, you might come back. There is an appealing process. But, you know, I want to be very clear, so that when you got a visa, it doesn't mean that it's 100% sure that you will admit it in this country. Most of the time, it is. We have thousands, hundreds of thousands of people that enters every day in the United States with no problem. But there are some cases in which, following the type of questions that these immigration officials ask, if they don't hear what they want to know, they might decide that, you know, probably you have to go back to your country. Another aspect of this, it's related to the length of the visa itself. There are visa, such as the B1 visa, in which the person is granted the opportunity to come to this country for a period of up to six months, up to six months. The "up" aspect is very important, because most of the time, and I've seen Italians do the same thing, and other people from other European countries and from all over the world, "up" to doesn't mean six months. It means that... It means that up to six months. You can't stay more than six months, but the immigration official at the end, when you are entering the country might say, listen, what are you doing here? Well, I'm participating to, I'm visiting my clients, for example. And then I ask you where you're going. So I'm going to Nevada, I'm going to Florida, I'm going to. And he might decide that, you know, probably for what you are describing, you might be allowed to stay only three months. So you have a visa that gives you the opportunity to stay up to six months. But the stamp that he will put on your visa, on your passport, will say that you have to leave the country within three months and not six anymore. You have no way of appealing this. So this is an aspect that, as I said before, I don't want to scare anybody. This is an open country, people come in every single day. We love to have Europeans and people from all over the world besides the politics of the current administration. But the point is, these are aspects that they need to be understood fully. Because if not, they can cause, you know, confusion, frustration. And of course, you know, we in particular, which are, you know, the ultimate representative of Union Camera Bank and Eurosham here in the United States for this program. We want to avoid because we want to push you in the best way possible. We have found the host entrepreneurs, we want to make sure that you can complete the exchange with that. So said that, let's go to echo. So there are three main visa that I used or waiver program that I used to enter in the United States for the I Global program. So we have seen people get in with a B visa. We haven't seen people get in with an ESTA, which is a visa waiver program for those European countries that have this agreement with the United States. The majority has it, there are, and I'm not sure, maybe Sienna can talk about that later if it's necessary. But you will have the link to the different websites where you need to apply. So you will see it there. And there is a J1 visa. Now, another big issue that I want to clarify. As I said before, you have seen people getting in with the B visa, with ESTA and with J1. Now, if we look at the rules and if we look at the law. The way the program is presented, and especially the way you are talking about the program when you enter the country. It is very important to determine what kind of visa you are actually getting to come here. If we want to have like a very strict and rigid interpretation of the law, an exchange program has to be done using a J1 visa. This is what the United States says. You need to have a J1 visa to come here if there is a very, very strict interpretation of the law. Now, the I program, it's an hybrid program. It could be also seen and presented in different ways. That's why we've seen people getting in with a B visa, with an ESTA. It could be considered like a discovery program of a new business in the United States. Might be seen and presented as a more, a less structured and less rigid program than an exchange. Just to give you an idea, the J1 visa program is what is commonly used for full-time stage, stage in the United States, full-time internship in which the person goes to work every single day, tends to stay here for longer time. Sometimes may have like a salary, so which is something that in this particular case is not provided. So these are the three, the three different type of visa that you need. We have three slides on each of those. And these are active links that you can click on it and apply for it. You have to, the ESTA is done online and basically doesn't require, if I'm correct, a visit to the embassy or the consulate. But you know, both B1 and J1 visa, they require an interview that has to be conducted for you at the consulate level. And, you know, we can give you some advice on how to present yourself at the interview itself. As I said, also this visas, they have different cost. And both in term of application fees, in term of, you know, cost of preparing the documentation. The most difficult one and the one that, you know, tend to cost more is the J1 because needs to be structured around a training program. And that requires work and that requires also an host organization. We are an host organization, by the way. A B1 is something in between. It requires like an application directly to the consulate. We have sent you the link, so you can, you can opt for that. As I said, it is important that we have seen people coming in with very, very different type of visa. We have had, if I remember correctly, Galen and no one was rejected, right?
No, no one of the new entrepreneurs, yes. Sorry, I just replied a question in the chat because somebody asked me how many relationship we implemented so far. We implemented 27 exchange concluded, 27 exchange concluded, 36 relationship build. Some of them are blocked, ready to start, ready to start status. But no one of the 27 entrepreneurs from Europe, Europe has been blocked when they arrived. All of them have been accepted and implemented their exchange, okay?
In some cases, we even offer the possibility for the new entrepreneur to obtain a ladder of support from us as a supporting document. This is a choice, you don't need to do it. It's something that, you know, especially if you apply with an ESTA or with a B1 visa might help you. Some people ask for it, they had it. In certain case, the ladder was shown at the border. In others, we're not even asked for it. So you have to make your own call on this. But as I said, so far, we never had a rejection. We have seen people coming with three different type of visa and the whole thing worked pretty well. As I said, you know, the past performance is that, it doesn't mean that this is going to be, it's going to happen also in the future. We have no reason to believe that it's not. But as I said, you know, visa are granted, access to this country is granted, it's not, you know, it's not a given. So this is something that, you know, you need to understand. So far, we never had a problem and we don't foresee having problem in the future. Now, let's talk about the actual situation, the current state of the traveling business in the United States. So basically, right now, there are two presidential proclamations in effect, which they suspend travel entry in the United States. One is the proclamation 994, 9994. Strictly related with the coronavirus pandemic. The second one is proclamation 10014. That basically suspends the entry of aliens who are considered risk for US level market following the coronavirus outbreak. So this is the situation. So when, when some of you asked us, has something changed in the United States? No, nothing has changed since this proclamation has been approved. So we can't tell you differently because there is nothing different to say. Now, does this mean that nobody is actually accessing the country? No, it doesn't mean that because there are exceptions. And unfortunately, as much I would like to reassure you on the exception, there are exceptions. So we can't tell you, please go for it. We have seen 100% success rate if you take this road to enter into this country. We know that there are consulate in Europe. And this is also a concern for us and for other organizations like us. Because we would like to give you a clear and precise information. But there are consulate in Europe, specifically some consulate, some American consulate in Spain that apparently are, you know, processing visa. They are issuing this visa. And if the person applying for this visa presents a request for urgency or an exception, which is not clear on what is based to, because we have seen the situation that are very different. He's granted, you know, entrance into the country, entry into the country. So I have a case, so I'm telling you about it. But if you ask us to supply information on this particular aspect, I have to bring you back to the official channels. And the official channels and the official proclamation are the one we just mentioned. So I'm not saying that there are no exception. It's that, you know, if I have to provide you with information, I have to look at the law the way it is. I can't, you know, supply you information on how the law has been applied so far because that could change. And I don't want any of you quoting me going to the US consulate saying, yeah, but I heard that the other people were, you know, granted access using this type of approach. Because even the consulate officers might deny that had that happening or might change his mind. So these are not, you know, nothing is written in stone. So what we are giving you today is the situation as it is. It's still, you know, a situation in, that is developing. We have a lot of our members that they have businesses in both countries, Italy and the United States. So are also the other binational organization that we work with. And we hear different stories. We hear that sometimes it is easier, sometimes it's more difficult. Some people got rejected, other people got accepted. So the situation is very different. What I'm telling you is that I understand the point of some of this American consulate and embassies. These are places that have been closed for a long time. So they had, you know, a series of application that are, you know, starting piling up. And they start processing them, not with the expectation that the person can actually travel to the country. But at least they can, you know, bring themselves up to date with the work, with the workload. As I said, since there are two different levels, a consulate official might think, let me process this visa, then, you know, I've done my job. This guy or this woman has full access to this country. But at the end, the proclamation hasn't changed. So if he travels, he travels at his own risk. And if he gets rejected in the United States, I am no responsibility on it. So that's why I invite you to focus on what I'm saying and really, you know, look at the official channels and the official procedure that we are mentioning here. These are some information, some website where you can get, you know, up to, up to date information on how to travel to the United States. They are very, very accurate. You can, you know, look at them, they are generally updated constantly. So if you went there yesterday, you might want to take a look in a couple of days because something can change. But these are the official channel. So that's why we are sending you to this because in our position, this is the only thing we can tell you to do. Right now, the proclamation basically 10014, it's limiting. J, H and L. As you see, it's not limiting B and ESTA. So this proclamation is valid under December 31st, 2020. We don't know whether or not it's going to be extended. We are in the middle of an election. We hope that, as you may know, the immigration issue has been central for the Trump Pence administration. We believe that if Biden wins, there might be more opening on that side. But you know, frankly, we don't see this situation to change in, especially for J, H and L change in a few weeks because we still have a pandemic in place and we still have a job market that is in distress. So, but definitely on the long run and there are already some openings, as you see. We can see this situation change. So I invite you to apply for the program. Be a little bit patient in term of, you know, when some of this exchange can start. But that doesn't mean that this country is closing. Always it's limiting the access of the foreign nationals forever. It's something that is temporary. You are from Europe and you see what is happening in Europe as well. So we have a resurgence of the virus. We hope that, you know, we can be held of this, you know, their situation as soon as possible. But this is the main reason why the limitation was put in place. Because if you look at all the exchange that we completed in the previous year, even with the Trump Pence administration and even with a strong focus on the, on protecting the American job market, the exchange program doesn't touch that. So it wasn't, it wasn't included in any type of limiting legislation. Okay, so these are the, I will, I will start answering some of the question that we got. We see that there are also some additional question here in the. I will see, the first one is from Filippo. Filippo is asking about the domain of the host entrepreneurs. I think this is the best way to find out what type of entrepreneurs are in the database is to actually register, correct? Greta, so that's the, and Galen. So we have a pretty diverse group of entrepreneurs, that host entrepreneurs that have signed up for the program. We are also continuing the promotion of the program. So we expect additional host entrepreneurs to join and to be part of this database. So the best way is, you know, if you are interested in pursuing this exchange, just register and look into the database yourself because you will find. And if you have specific question on, generally for each host entrepreneurs, there is a website, you can visit that. And you can have a better idea on how, what they do and what they are looking for. I have another question here from Andrea. And the question is regarding how long is the process to add a new host entrepreneurs? Okay, so well, we had in the past year, we had to really push hard to make sure that people understand the value of the exchange program itself as an host entrepreneurs. Having now completed 27 exchanges, so we have stories to tell, we have experience to share. We also had an event in which. We also had an event in which we presented all these success stories. It's a process. Sometimes we have a person that is working on it. It's before we were doing it every month, we were, you know, adding five, six host entrepreneurs. Now the situation is a little different, Andre, because some of these companies are not fully functional. They are, you know, they are also, some of them might be in distress. So presenting the program to companies that are, you know, going through a very difficult time might be a little bit more difficult. So we don't foresee, you know, having, adding new entrepreneurs with the same, at the same pace we did it in the past. But it's something that we are actually doing. Is it true that the program will get extended on Canada? How likely is this to happen? Gaileen and Greta?
There is, this is a pilot action that will conclude in the 30th March 2021. European Commission is right now in the process of validation of the other call for proposal for other consortium that present their own countries or whatever. We present a proposal ourselves and our next consortia will be Canada as a destination. But we don't know if we granted this new proposal. Currently, Canada is not a target country, but could be a target country from March. We have to wait, to wait on the validation of European Commission and how many consortium will be granted for the next three years.
Agada is asking, is there an opportunity to cooperate with research institutes, departments? I'm a PhD student and an entrepreneur since one year. So Agada, right now, I don't think we have any research institute or university as a part of host entrepreneurs. We are actively promoting the program, so we might add them. I would suggest you to reach out to us if you have something in mind. Because probably a person in your position might have already contacts established with US-based research centers. So this is something could be done also on the other way. So you suggest a potential host and we reach out to them. So if there is any interest in that, please, you know, write to us and we'll look into it. What about insurance? Christina is asking. Okay, so you have, you have to provide your own insurance. You need an insurance. I strongly suggest you to have an insurance. There are different options available. It's for your peace of mind. We have an insurance company that we work with for our J1 visa training and interns. I don't know if they can provide you with support unless you have a J1 visa. But maybe Sienna can answer this. Maybe we can give you some, we can put in the welcome package or information package, some information on how to obtain. A lot of these people came here using even the most basic one, the one that are sold to travel agencies such as Europa Insurance. So Europe Assistance. It's something that works. I've seen people getting insurance with IAG, other insurance companies. So that would be something, something good to have. And it doesn't cost too much. It's also, you know, let's think a little bit about insurance. Since the time that you're going to spend in the United States, it's limited. You probably need an insurance to cover emergencies. It would be much more difficult to obtain and much more costly to obtain insurances that will cover like a long-term disease or, you know, therapeutic requirements or or just a normal doctor visit that you might decide to have in your own country and maybe what you want to have in the United States. I learned also that there are a national health system in Europe that also partially cover you when you go overseas. You might want to look into it, but it's always good to have an insurance. And as I said, it doesn't cost too much. Silvio, I'm interested in going as a new entrepreneur in Israel. It is also business visa required. I can ask you, I'm not an expert on Israel. So I don't know, either Gaileen or Greta, my answer to that?
I just typed the answer to Silvio suggesting to contact us for this specific question on Israel.
All right. So these are the questions that we got and we basically listed over here. So I think I already talked about what kind of visa. The second question was partially addressed. As I said, we are, you know, actively promoting the program and we are trying to add the new entrepreneurs. There are no restrictions on that related to COVID. It's more like an opportunity issue. If the company is not doing well, if the company is in distress, some of these companies may be closed. It's unlikely that they are going to, you know, host a new entrepreneurs. This is an interesting question that probably I haven't answered yet. Number three, who's in charge of the visa application? You, not us. You are in charge of the visa application. You have to do it. I gave you three options. I'm not going to tell you which one to, each one comes with a different set of responsibilities. So as a new entrepreneur, you are responsible for apply for a visa. How long does it take to obtain a visa? Once again, this, it depends. It depends the type of visa that you're applying to and the processing time. As I said, the Asta, so the waiver visa program, it is pretty straightforward and it doesn't take too long. It's done online directly. The other two that I mentioned, the B1 and the J1, they require an interview and as a consequence, they are, you know, the process is longer. The longest one is probably the J1 because also requires us or whoever is doing it. Because you need a sponsor organization for that. So there are, for the J1, there are three different subjects, three different parties involved. You as an applicant, the host entrepreneur as the host company and a sponsor organization, in this case us or, you know, you might apply with any other sponsorship organization. That's, it's up to you. So that is, will take longer and it is a much more complex program. In reality, it's a program that, you know, might allow you eventually, but outside of the AI program, to stay longer. Because with a J1 visa, you theoretically could stay in this country up to 18 months. But, you know, that's a different thing. So I would not, the I, it's up to three months. So it's, we have to follow the instruction. It might be a visa to consider if, you know, you complete the I and you want to stay longer on your own and in a completely separate way from the I program to think about it. Is it possible to travel to New York or do I have to request a special permission because of COVID? As I said, at this time, we have those two proclamations in place. I've seen people obtaining an exemption. I don't know how this exemption is given. I've seen entrepreneurs that, people that have a business here that are able to prove that it's very important for them or must crucial for them to come to this country. So they obtain it. I've seen giving this exemption fairly easy. There is a case that Gaileen showed us of a Spanish guy that obtained it without any particular effort. But as I said, these are exceptions. So I can base my answer on exception. I have to base it on the rules. Is there a deadline by, the deadline, also Greta, is there a deadline by which I need to complete my exchange in New York?
Well, for the moment, yes, because the program is finishing in March 2021. So for this, like as we are at the end of the first phase of the project, yes. But, but yes, when the program will restart, of course, the deadline is the duration of the project.
All right. The other one, when it's possible to travel in the States, we already answered. I would like to, because since Greta is talking, probably she can answer also the number nine. What is the timeline for an I application from start to finish based on your Gaileen and Greta?
Well, this is not so easy to answer because it depends from how fast the new and the host entrepreneurs are in, given us all the supporting documents, all the curriculum, the business plan, et cetera. And, and yes, and it depends from the, also from the intermediate organization exchanging, approving or asking to improve the application. But generally, I don't know, Gaileen, if you can give a prediction, but.
Yes, the problem with the global exchange is that there are two phases of validation. The first one is when Eros Shamaris, the coordinator, takes the documents of the profiles and validate the business plan and everything. And this takes from 10 to 15 days. Then when the work plan is uploaded in the platform, it takes around 20 days for the discussion and negotiation and so on. And then the relationship passes to the hands of European Commission and can take another 15 days there. The work process can take two months or less or less. It's happened that a work process can take one month. It depends if we found a very good profile from the entrepreneur's point of view. Means that you have a very good profile, business plan or whatever with any problem, the process will be really, really fast. But if there is some improvement to do to the new entrepreneur's profile or the host entrepreneur's profile, these things takes times. This is the reason why, as I told you all before, it's important to be very clear the ideas and it's really important also to work with intermediate organization in this process. And I want to tell to all of you, to Federico, Alice, Sienna, that in the participant, it's not only entrepreneurs interested in participate to the global exchange. There is some intermediate organization. I control the list of attendee and I saw that at least there is at least six or seven intermediate organizations from France, Italy, Lithuania that are participating in this. And thanks to you, to participants, because it's really important. We need your support because you are the support in this process. Because it's really, really complicated because the global project is a pilot project. The most of the mission was so hard. And yes, this is a question also for them. Please, the two new entrepreneurs, please work very well with the intermediate organization and intermediate organization, please communicate with us for any requests. Okay?
All right. We have, can I travel to the United States? We already, you know, answer. Are host entrepreneurs working remotely? Some of them are. We don't have a lockdown in New York, in your state. Consider that, you know, when we think about New York, we think about the reality of a large metropolitan area called the tree state area, which also encompasses certain areas in New Jersey, in Connecticut and of course, New York. A lot of offices here in New York are working with a limited number of people in it. They are trying to, you know, incentivize people to walk from home. So is it possible that some of this, you know, host entrepreneurs, they have a limited number of people working in their office? Which, you know, we don't see this as a permanent solution. So we believe that it's going to change. It depends a lot with the type of business, frankly. So this is, it would be like, you know, to answer correctly, we should, you know, take a look at the entire list and go case by case. In case of a fruitful collaboration, is it possible to extend my visa and stay in the country longer? Yes, I think, you know, this is definitely possible, but has to be done in two phases. First, if the I program completes the I, then you may want to apply for, at that point, I would suggest that the visa that is more appropriate is definitely the J1. And we can help you on that. Some of the host entrepreneurs that we register, they are already hosting J1 visa interns and trainees separately from this program. So they are familiar with that. They might be even interested in extending. It's up, you know, to the way the relationship develops. Are there other options to co-finance the I exchange on top of 1,000 euro a month? I want to say a few things about this. I don't think so. Maybe Gaileen and Greta can confirm that. But this is, the question of financial support has been an issue that has been brought to us on a regular basis. And I just want to make a comment on that. I believe this is a wonderful opportunity to test a business idea, learn about the new market, learn about how people do and things differently or work in a different way. And, you know, I think as a young entrepreneurs or a new entrepreneurs in Europe, you guys are lucky that there is a program that supports you even with that money. Because there are many other countries which, you know, there are no similar programs in place. Said that, I think that the exchange should be seen as an opportunity. So because we have seen in the past, you know, the young entrepreneur in some way putting a condition on his, you know, applying and eventually completing the exchange based on the type of financial support that he receives. If the financial support is the only reason why you are interested in the program, frankly, I would probably ask you to look elsewhere because this is not the objective. The financial support is designed in a way to help you out, but not becoming like a paid, you know, vacation on the expenses of the European Union. That's not, that's not what the program is designed for. As I said, it's a financial support for people that are very, very interested in further developing their, you know, ideas, their business models, their professional careers. But it can be seen just like, simply as a system of redistributing resources within the European Union. Am I correct, Greta and Gaileen?
Yes, and I want also to reply to a question in the chat because somebody, Christina, asked, just to confirm, 1,000 euros per month plus 1,100 for travel? No, it's wrong. It's 1,000 euros per month only for three months plus one only fee, one only tranche of 800 euros for travel costs. And as told by Federico, the aims of financial support is to support, to cover the travel, the subsistence costs. It's not a payment. It's not, it's excluded that the new entrepreneurs take any benefits from the financial support. This is an exchange for a chain of competences. The added value of this exchange is the experience, is the business transfer, is the opportunity to make some partnership, to obtain competences and so on. But it's not a payment. European Commission don't pay you for travel, for working to another person in the opposite place on the work. Okay? There, I want, I only want to add something to the question number 12. In case of fruitful collaboration, it is possible to extend my. In case of fruitful collaboration, it is possible to extend my visa and stay in the country longer? Up to you. Also, if the person have a longer visa, they can rest there. But the RAS for the entrepreneurs will cover only the first three months of the change. And this has to be very, very clear. Okay?
Another one, probably is the number 14. Gailene, how can I qualify as a young entrepreneur by age? We already touched that. I don't know if there's anything to add. So the other one is, does the exchange need to be completed by the end of May 2021? May 2021. No, it's March 2021.
March. It's March 2021. Not March, not the end of March, it's 13 March. It's very different. March 13, 2021.
It is possible.
Yeah, I only want to add something. And because there is the European Commission function also as attendee of this webinar. The AJ Global Program will be extended, but we don't know if we will be the intermediate organization at New York. If we win, because we presented a proposal, we will stay at New York with our host entrepreneurs. But maybe gain another consortium and the consortium that obtained the grant don't have New York as a target country, as Canada or Korea or another place in the United States, Florida, California, or whatever. Please, this is a thing that I want to stress. If you are interested to go to New York, we can work together in order to implement this relationship as soon as possible. If everything is okay and we can establish a relationship from January to March, we will do it. But please focus in this moment because we don't want to we don't have, how to say, a crystal ball. Okay, we don't know if we will obtain the grant. And we can support you in an exchange at New York after March 2021. Okay?
Thank you, Gailene. Thank you, Greta. The number 16, I think, is a very, very interesting question and brings and it's connected very much to what you were saying. Is it possible for a new entrepreneur to propose to an intermediate organization, specific company, that they would like to pursue an exchange with? Yes, it is possible. And actually, I would say it is encouraged to do that. Because especially in this particular time, if there is what we are seeing on our side in terms of the organization that finds the host entrepreneurs, there is a lot of interest in anything that is pandemic-related. It could be an idea. It could be like a sanitation process. It could be a process itself to limit, you know, the contagious spread. So if there is anything that, you know, you would like to propose, please do so. And this is, it's actually works even better if there is this this aspect in place. We will promote the program no matter what. But if there are, you know, specific areas in which we might not have contacts or we haven't yet had the opportunity to, you know, to present the program itself and to find some some host entrepreneurs and we find a new entrepreneur in Europe that is interesting and gives us the name, we'll follow up immediately. It's, I think it's one of the aspects of the program that needs to be further developed, actually. I don't know. I think we pretty much answered all the questions. I don't see anything else in the Q and A. We have been a little bit, we went a little bit over the one hour time. We still have, you know, many, many people still listening to us. If there is nothing else to add, I thank everybody for participating. I thank my co-presenter, Gailene and Greta. And thank you to my colleague for structuring this presentation. Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything. Bye.